Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to call to order the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. First, we're going to be led in prayer by Commissioner Schaefer, and then Commissioner McAdoo is going to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Good night, as we're in this holiday season, and it's a holiday season for a lot of different people and different beliefs, but I have a prayer that was written by a Scotsman many years ago. He lived in the middle 1800s to 1894. He is an author and a poet. His name was Robert Louis Stevenson. And I think the message that he says in this prayer is, doesn't matter what faith, what belief you are, I believe the words have something for us all. A Christmas prayer. Loving Father, help us remember the birth of Jesus, that we may share in the song of the angels, the gladness of the shepherds, and the wisdom of the wise men. Close the door of hate and open the door of love all over the world. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting. Deliver us from evil by the blessing which Christ brings, and teach us to be merry with clean hearts. May the Christmas morning make us happy to be thy children, and the Christmas evening bring us to our beds with grateful thoughts, forgiving and forgiven. And dear Lord, we just ask that this be a time of year of blessing for everyone, a time of blessing and a time for healing for Tammy Sandlin and Tammy Coats. And dear Lord, we just ask you to please be with the Stinson family at this time. In Jesus' name, amen.
I plead with Jesus, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Black?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook?
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan?
Here.
Commissioner Farley?
Here.
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner Sandlin?
Here.
Commissioner Turner?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Baum?
Here.
Commissioner Coggan?
Commissioner Young?
Commissioner Phillips?
Commissioner McAdoo?
Commissioner Ely?
Here.
Commissioner Gooch?
Here.
Commissioner Soriano? Twenty-one present.
Okay, thank you very much. You have before you, I believe, a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, I do approve those minutes and ask that you approve them as written.
Right, and a second from Commissioner Jernigan. Does anyone have any additions or corrections? All in favor of that, then please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Okay, now we have a time for public comments, and we have one speaker tonight, and Mr. Todd knows the rules and regulations here, so come forward, Mr. Todd, and tell us your name and address and make your comments.
My name is Donald Todd, and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Save our godly Constitution. Recently, we showed a state senator from East Tennessee how Rutherford County's cash balances of unspent surplus revenue, almost $87 million worth, between 2011, 2012, had been invested in three accounts at banks. He noticed that in several instances, the maturity dates of these investments were not arranged at convenient dates to make it easy to recycle the surpluses to the next fiscal year's budget. Setting convenient dates would have made it easier to transfer money to a particular fund showing a shortfall in the next year's budget, and would easily eliminate the shortfall and also avoid a tax increase. Rutherford County's tax increase this year could have been avoided by a properly worded statute requiring proper maturity dates. The state senator agreed and began the work of writing a bill for presentation to the legislature. Recently, we received copies of records from the Tennessee Department of the Treasury for the past three years. On March 1, 2010, the records show that $14 billion of cash from surplus revenue was invested in hundreds of banks. The senator from East Tennessee was very disturbed by these records showing that taxpayers' money was not being used to pay for normal operations of government. He was also upset when he learned that the total debt of the state in 2012 unnecessarily was $2.3 billion. Unwise use of invested surplus revenue was partly responsible for the huge debts in our county and our city. Recently, an economics professor explained how Obama and the federal government omitted unfunded liabilities during its accounting procedure, and this resulted in a dangerous increase of the federal debt to $70 trillion. This means that our country is in danger of a financial collapse. Similar to the federal government's lack of transparency, cities, counties, and states are likewise following wasteful practices as they mishandle surplus revenue. When this occurs, the debt escalates inevitably to bankruptcy. Unfortunately, one of Metro's agencies in Chicago, the National Association of State Budget Officers, is forcing our county and state finance directors to follow policies leading to socialism. After I showed the state senator from East Tennessee a copy of a 1975 Missouri legislative act, he seemed to favor the adoption of similar legislation in Tennessee, probably because it would eliminate metro policy in the counties and the state.
Right, thank you. Next, we're going to call on Commissioner Gooch for elections and confirmations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Fellow Commissioner, Steering has several items for your consideration this evening. On your desk, you will find a copy of the notary candidates, and I will move for their election, Mr. Chair.
Right, and a second from Commissioner Tiffany Phillips. All those in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposition? Thank you.
Second, we need to announce a vacancy on the insurance committee for an employee representative. Third, we need to announce four vacancies on the Public Building Authority, and to announce the reappointment of the Ethics Committee, which will be Commissioner Joyce Ely, Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Adam Coggins, Trustee Tab Beatty, and Ms. Frances Mosby. Fifth, we need to fill four vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board. Steering nominates Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Will Jordan, and as a farm woman, Ms. Francilla Witworth. And I nominate Mr. Donald Blankenship as a farmer, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Black. Any discussion or questions? Okay, then, all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you very much.
Six, we need to fill two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board. Steering nominates Mr. Robert Asbury and Ms. Frances Mosby, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Next, to fill vacancy on the Limeball Library Board, Steering nominates Mr. Daniel Graves. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Commissioner Coggan. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carried.
And finally, to fill a school board vacancy, Steering nominates Mr. Gary Eeks, and I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, Commissioner Jeff Phillips. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Man, you did a great job there. Not a single vote of opposition. Okay, Mr. Eeks is here. Ms. Cook said if you'd like to speak so people will see who you are. Mr. Eeks, stand up, and everyone will recognize you as our newest school board member, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we don't have any unfinished business. We do have a report from the Purchasing Committee, their monthly report, and we need a motion to accept that report. Ms. Cook, second by Commissioner Schaefer. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Then we will be able to move right along with the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee's report. Commissioner Ely.
General Fund Budget Amendments, Item J-2A. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. This is from the Sheriff's Department. Increased revenues from contributions and gifts, $670. Increased expenditures for animal food and supplies, $670. Increased revenues, contributions, and gifts of $1,004. Increased expenditures, other supplies and materials, $954. And other contracted services, $50. Increased revenues from sale of materials and supplies, $1,300. Increased expenditures, other contracted services, $89. Other supplies and materials, $1,211. Increased revenue from the sale of recyclable materials, $4,767. Increased expenditures for other supplies and materials, $4,767. Increased revenues from government agency contracts, $20,058. To increased expenditures for in-service training, $16,950. And repair and maintenance of buildings, $3,108. Increased revenues from other direct federal revenues, $4,128. Increased expenditures for printing, stationery, and forms, $4,128. Increased revenues for contributions and gifts, $9,516. And increased expenditures for other contracted services, $9,516. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Anyone have any questions? Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2B, a Drug Control Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Drug Control Fund be amended as follows. Increased revenues from narcotic insurance recovery, $3,427. Increased expenditure for motor vehicles, $3,427. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner P. Any questions on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2C, a Special Purpose Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Special Purpose Fund be amended as follows. Increased revenue from asset forfeitures, $17,985. Increased expenditures for confidential drug enforcement, $17,985. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions on that? If not, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2D, an Ambulance Service Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Ambulance Service Fund be amended as follows. Increased revenues from contributions and gifts from Stonecrest Hospital of $6,000. Increased expenditures for in-service and staff development, $6,000. A decrease in assigned for public health, $25,000. Increased expenditure for judgments, $25,000. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any questions on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2E, a Debt Service Fund Budget Amendment. This is a cleanup amendment, Commissioners, from action that we took last month at our meeting. This is recognizing transactions in the issuance of a capital outlay note that replaced one coming due in January. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Debt Service Fund be amended as follows. Decreased revenues from bond proceeds, $9,300,000. Increased revenues from note proceeds, $9,300,000. Decreased expenditures for other debt issuance charge, $14,700. Increased expenditures, other debt issuance charge, $2,205. And increased expenditures for debt issuance charge, $12,495. Decreased expenditures for other debt service, $9,300,000. Increased expenditures for principal on notes, $1,395,000. And increased expenditures for principal on notes, $7,905... Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second, Ms. Cook. Any questions on that? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2F, a Change to Flexible Spending Account. Whereas Rutherford County currently provides its employees the opportunity to participate in a health flexible spending arrangement for their qualified medical expenses. Whereas the plan currently provides a grace period for the employee to use amounts remaining from the previous year to pay expenses incurred for certain qualified benefits during the period of up to two months and 15 days immediately following the end of the plan year. Whereas IRS Notice 2013-74 details modifications to the Use or Lose Rule for Health FSA's allowing $500 of unused amounts remaining at the end of a plan year in a Health FSA to be paid or reimbursed to plan participants for qualified medical expenses incurred during the following year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford Board of Commissioners that the county IRS Section 125 Plan document be amended to include the carryover provision of $500 and delete the grace period provision for Health FSA's beginning with the 2013 calendar year. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Soriano, a second. Any questions on this? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2G, a Change to the 2015 premiums for pre-65 retirees. Whereas Rutherford County currently provides its pre-65 retirees medical insurance at retirement when certain criteria are met. And whereas the medical plan currently calculates the pre-65 retiree premiums as a standalone group. Whereas for the 2015 medical plan year, the preliminary calculation for pre-65 premiums has been discussed by the Insurance Committee and the Budget Committee, and two options have been recommended. Whereas the two options are, one, to blend the medical claim experience of the pre-65 retirees with the medical claim experience of active employees to determine premium rates for both groups. And two, to offer a $500 per month subsidy, or the adequate rate, whichever is less, and allow the pre-65 retirees to obtain coverage elsewhere. The retiree may elect the subsidy option during annual open enrollment, once, during the time that the retiree is classified as a pre-65 retiree. Once the pre-65 retiree makes this election, they will not be allowed to return to the county insurance plan until they become Medicare eligible. Once they become Medicare eligible, they must return to the county plan within 30 calendar days of turning Medicare age to receive continued support from the county as defined in the Rutherford County Retirement Medical Plan Eligibility and Benefit Information. Otherwise, their benefits with the county cease. And whereas blending the retiree rate with the active rate will increase the annual required contribution and the unfunded liability. And allowing retirees to leave the county plan would help offset a part of the increase. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the change to the 2015 pre-65 retirees premiums be approved by allowing the medical experience to be blended with the experience of other active employees, and allow the retiree to receive a $500 per month subsidy, or the adequate rate, whichever is less, and allow the retiree to leave the county plan to obtain coverage elsewhere. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Jordan. Any questions? Commissioner Farley.
I don't know who would be wanting to address this. Who can tell me what the reason for this and the benefits of this is going to be by doing this?
By doing this? If you remember, during the last structuring the rate, the rate for the retirees, the pre-65, was going to go up so much that for the one-year decision, we said that we would change the allocation. Instead of 50-50, it was going to be 65-35 for one year until we could come up with a plan. One of the things discussed last year was blending the experience to come up with a rate. But in doing that, it would have increased what the activists were already experiencing the increase. It would add another increase on top of them. So with the experience we've had, it's... It looks like next year, the 2015, would be a good year to blend the experience to create the rates. In the option of doing the $500, that's less than what the county will be contributing to each of the pre-65 retirees' premium rates in 2014. It would be less.
So are you saying that this is a win-win situation for the retiree and for the county as well?
And especially for that retiree, it was shown where... And maybe Mr. Brown can explain to this better, but finding a plan in the open market for a plan similar to what we have in the county, with a $500 subsidy, the retiree could end up paying less. It would be benefit to that retiree. It benefits the county by the medical experience being gone.
Thank you.
Questions? Commissioner P.
I just have a statement. Because my wife is an employee of the Rutherford County School Board, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument, my vote, answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Anyone else have a question? Commissioner Soriano.
........................................................................
Commissioner Phillips.
Because I'm an employee from Rutherford County Schools, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument, my vote, answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Anyone else wish to speak? Commissioner Schaefer.
Well, my wife works for the school board. She carries the insurance. But I know you're not supposed to talk about females' age, but let's put it this way. When this comes into effect, she'll be eligible for Medicare.
The other discussion? All right, then. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item J-2H, a Request for Installation of Digital National Warning System. Whereas Rutherford County currently has a national warning system located at the Murfreesboro Police Department. And whereas Tennessee Emergency Management Agency is working to implement a digital national warning system with upgraded technology to warn against natural and technological disasters. Whereas the digital system has four levels of service offered, and the recommendation of the Public Safety and Budget Committees is Tier Four Elite Package to include voice and data communications with Internet and satellite redundancy. And whereas TIMA will provide the system with the first-year service and installation at no cost to the county, and the cost to the county in future years will be $2,359.70 per year. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to sign any documents necessary to implement this new system with TIMA at the Tier Four level. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Ms. Cook. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, one no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Item J-2I, a Request to Apply for Assistance to Firefighters Grant for a Pumper. Whereas the FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant application period is open for submittal of firefighting and emergency response equipment grants that require a 10% local match. And whereas the fire department is in need of a pumper to replace an apparatus with high maintenance costs. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other required officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant in an amount not to exceed $350,000, requiring 10% local matching funds. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any questions? All right, then. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2J, an Extension of the USDA Lease at Lane Agripark. Whereas the current 10-year lease with USDA at Lane Agripark expired on November 30, 2013. And whereas the USDA wishes to continue leasing the space at Lane Agripark with a new five-year lease with an additional five-year option, but has not approved and processed the new lease. And whereas the USDA wishes to extend the current lease with the same terms as the expired lease from December 1, 2013, up to September 30, 2014. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County a lease extension with the USDA. A copy of the same being attached here, too, as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim, for space located at Lane Agripark. Resolved this 12th day of December 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Does anyone have any questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Item J-2K, Approval of Funding for Planning, Design, Construction, and Acquiring Property for the Judicial Building and Park for the judicial building and parking. Whereas the current judicial building is being utilized to its maximum capacity, and whereas there has been discussion for several years on the plans to construct a new judicial building, and the land has been purchased for this need, and whereas there is also a need for a parking facility to accompany the new judicial building. And whereas in order to construct these new facilities, designs and plans have to be created as well as possible land purchase for the parking facility. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that $5 million be allocated from a future bond issue for the purchase of land, planning, design, and construction of the named facilities. Resolve this twelfth day of December 2013. I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner McAdoo, second. Questions? Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, I voted against it in budget just because of the reason I'll be voting on again tonight against it, just strictly because of not of the procedure that we're, you know, that we need to, or the actually design of it or funding the $5 million for design. I'm really in favor of that. It's just the point of the part of the parking that's out of kilter here, and I think we're maybe getting a cart a little before the horse. I don't agree with it, the parking garage being over there at the property assessor's office, clerk's office, all that over there, but the land that we've purchased, we were in, or I was in thinking, I'll just put it on myself, as a county commissioner when we did all that, that we had enough property to actually build the judicial building there as well as parking garage and everything, and then I know it later on, it got kind of switched, we're going to build the parking garage over at the property assessor's office. Well, it looks like here that we may be looking for more land for the parking area, and I'd just really like to have that all tied up, not neat little package, before we decide to do design, because I certainly don't want to spend $5 million on design or trying to get this designed on this piece of property, and then we have to buy additional property, and you know what happens there whenever we put something like this in mind, the property value real next door is going to go through the roof. So I'd like first to have that parking situation handled before we jump in the design of this facility, and that's all. I know we're really, we've been pushing this back, pushing this back, and pushing this back, and it's time for us to maybe take the bull by the horns and get this project underway, but I'm really concerned about this all rolled into one $5 million package.
The other discussion. All right, if there's no discussion, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Nineteen yes, two no. Motion passes.
Item J-2L, approval of the 2014-2015 budget calendar. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the 2014-15 budget calendar be approved, a copy of the same being attached heretofore as Exhibit One and incorporated herein by reference as of set forth herein at length verbatim, with the adoption date for the 2014-15 budget scheduled for June 27, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Serino. Any discussion or questions? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much.
And the last item on the Budget Finance and Investment Committee agenda, commissioners, is just for your information only, no vote is necessary. This is a requirement from the Comptroller's Office to report this to the commission, and this is a report on the debt obligation concerning the general obligation capital outlay note series 2013. And you have that report in front of you, but I will call attention to box number 11, that is probably of interest to all of us. The interest rate and the interest cost was .59%. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you for an excellent job there. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're just a couple of minutes past our time that we should start our public hearing, so we apologize for that just a bit. We have a rezoning request, number 13-A017, by Thomas Stephan on behalf of Mr. D.R. Horton. Located at 4004 and 4102 Shelbyville Highway, existing zoning is residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a planned unit development on a site of approximately 131 acres of a total 210-acre site, and Mr. Demossi, you may give us more information.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, Mayor Burgess and members of the commission. The property that's before you tonight is located along Shelbyville Highway, basically at the intersection of Rucker Road. The name of the development's Davenport Station was originally approved as a planned residential development back in August of 2007. The original development was to consist of 353 single-family dwellings, 132 town home dwellings, and then 10 commercial lots. The Planning Commission did consider and approve a preliminary plat for the single-family portion for Section 1 in 2007, and two final plats, they split it into two phases in 2008. While the plats were approved, no construction was ever commenced on the site, and most recently in October of this year, the plats have just been extended over the last few years. The development has recently been purchased by the applicant who wishes to make changes to the original approval outside of the already-approved Section 1. The primary change is to remove the 92 town home units from that section of the development, replace it with single-family units. Revised numbers shown on page one of your pattern book, and every table here has a copy of the pattern book, this is a revised copy from the, the changes made from the Planning Commission. They do show a reduction of 44 total units from the original approval in 2007. One of the conditions of the original approval was to put a traffic signal at the intersection of Rucker Road and Shelbyville Highway within three years after the development started. However, since no construction ever really began with the development, the traffic signal was never required to be installed. Most of the discussion we had at the Planning Commission did concern the timing of the traffic improvements to Rucker Road and Shelbyville Highway. The motion by the Planning Commission to approve this included a provision to be added to the pattern book, which is before you and was added, that the applicant would complete a traffic study, a revised traffic study, to evaluate a traffic signal warrant at that intersection, Rucker Road and Shelbyville Highway. Once that report was completed and agreed upon by the county planning and engineering department, along with the applicant's traffic engineer, and the report states that the above-location warranted a traffic signal, the developers would post a bond in the agreed-upon amount for the traffic signal installation, along with all the other necessary changes and modifications to the pavement that needed to be made. This bond would be required to be in place prior to the planning and engineering department releasing Section 1 of Davenport Station final plat for recording. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this development by unanimous vote. There were a couple of people who were there that had some questions about the development. One was an adjacent property owner, seemed okay with the proposed changes. The other lived in the subdivision directly to the north, they just had some, she just had some questions about the, how the property was going to be accessed in the beginning phases of the development. With that explanation, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's design engineer representative is here, as well as our county engineer.
All right, are there any questions of Mr. Demossi? Excuse me, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, the green space is just along the back at, along the Stones River, and basically it's a walking trail, is the rest woods?
Yes, sir, there'll be that, but if you look also, you see there's a couple of, in the yellow area, you'll see a couple of open space areas, a pool and another open space area right along Shelbyville Highway, so they, actually that's new to this part of the development. That was added, the original part in the back was actually part of the original plan, but they have added a couple more pocket parks in there as well.
So a pool's considered green space?
It's considered recreational, it's open space, it's not just green space, yes, sir.
Any other questions of Mr. Demossi? Okay then, thank you, sir. What we'll now do is we'll declare the public hearing open. If anyone wishes to speak for or against this proposal, please come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. Does anyone wish to speak? I don't see anyone rising to speak, so therefore, we're going to declare the public hearing closed. Do we have a motion? Mr. Farley.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the request with all conditions that the Planning Commission has set forth.
All right, you have second, Commissioner Phillips and Commissioner McAdoo. Any discussion or questions? All right, all of you in favor of this, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? That motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Demossi. There is not a report from the Health and Education Committee. Commissioner McAdoo, we have one agenda item for him to present on behalf of the Property Management Committee. Can you read from the tablet? Yes, sir.
Resolution. Whereas the attached lease by and between Rutherford County, Tennessee, and St. Thomas Midtown Hospital, a nonprofit corporation formerly known as Seton Corporation, for leasing of premises at 611 East Lyell Street, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, for a new ambulance station and emergency management facility. A copy of said lease being attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein at length verbatim, as is set forth herein, herein has been approved by the Property Management Committee, and where else it is in the best interest of citizens of Rutherford County for the county to enter into said lease with St. Thomas Midtown Hospital. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby approves the lease with St. Thomas Midtown Hospital for leasing of the, for said property according to the terms and provisions contained in said lease. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officials for and on behalf of Rutherford County be and hereby are authorized to execute for and on behalf of Rutherford County the lease with St. Thomas Midtown Hospital. Resolve this twelfth day of December 13, and I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan and others. All right, any questions on that? All right, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you very much. There's not a report from Public Safety Committee. Now we have from the Public Works and Planning Committee, an agenda item. Commissioner McAdoo, not McAdoo, Commissioner Jordan again.
Public Works and Planning Committee has a resolution to approve a new drainage easement and road book. Whereas the Tennessee County Uniform Road Law of 1974 has set out various civil and criminal penalties for the working on private roads by the county highway department personnel. And whereas the road board has approved the list of Rutherford County roads as submitted by the road superintendent. And whereas the private act authorized the Rutherford County Highway Commission and superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easement requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. And whereas the road board has approved the list of Rutherford County and public drainage easement, and whereas the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the list of Rutherford County road and public drainage easements as submitted by the road superintendent. And therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county commission approve the list of Rutherford County roads and public drainage easement as submitted by the road superintendent in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 54-10-103 and 54-10-104. These roads and public drainage easements shall be the only roads and public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this twelfth day of December 2013, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner P. Any questions on that? All right, all in favor of that, then, please say aye. Are there any opposed? All right, very good. There's not any report from the Steering Committee. Is there any other business to come before this body? Commissioner Schaefer.
This Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., at the House of Pancakes on Gamble Lane off the Old Nashville Highway in Laverne, the Laverne Rescue Squad is having a great pancake breakfast. Please come.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor, county commissioners, folks in the audience, I'm Steve Sandlin, county commissioner in District 9. It's a, I'm coming with you today with a heartfelt announcement. As of this week, I am a candidate for the Register of Deeds, and it's a countywide race. I appreciate your vote, May 6 primary, but with that, and why I'm making this announcement, is that I will no longer seek the District 9 County Commission seat. It's been 24 years of service here on, at the end of this term here, which I guess is be the end of August. I've certainly enjoyed representing District 9 and my constituents out there in Rutherford County and many different issues here in the 24 years. It is a little bit emotional though, because that's all my wife knows I've ever been as a county commissioner, as far as my kids too, as a county commissioner, and I just, I really enjoyed being here. I never thought I'd be here 24 years when I first ran back in August of '90 and was elected, and I thought maybe a couple of terms and I'd try to do something else, but a blink of an eye and here you are at 24 years, and it's been awesome. So the reason I'm saying this is for those folks in District 9, go over to the election commission that's interested in running for county commission, pick up your papers, get your signatures, and get out there and run, and try, and be a county commissioner. It's a, it's a really, it's an experience, an experience you will enjoy and continue on. I need a good county commissioner after I'm gone, because I continue, I want to continue living out there and be out there, and it's a great community in Rutherford County and a great District 9, and I want to thank my constituents most of all for having the faith in me and continuing putting me up here each and every term, but, and thank you too, commissioners. I appreciate y'all and working with y'all, and I'll still be here till August. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Jeff Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Everyone knows, we talked a little bit before the commission meeting tonight, but Rutherford County has lost one of its favorite sons. Long-term commissioner for District 17, Joe Blackhays, passed away, I believe it was Monday, and just to read a little bit about, and it's very little, about his, some of his accomplishments, he served on this commission from 1968 to 1990, and numerous, numerous Rutherford County boards and commissions, including the former Don Field, which he also chaired, Rutherford County Planning Commission, which he also chaired. He also served on the Conservation Board and was a member of the St. Clair Senior Citizen Center, and served as chairman of that organization too. Joe Blackhays was 98 years old and so served our community and MTSU well, and he will be sadly missed by us and also his family. He was 98 years old, bless his heart.
Thank you. Well said, and certainly a tribute to a wonderful man that gave so much to this great county. Anyone else have anything they wish to bring before this body? If not, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.